All right, well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our March 7th Planning Board Meeting. I will call us to order and read the roll. John, myself, present. Rebecca?
I'm here.
Phil?
Yes.
Neil is absent. Mike?
Yes.
Mark is excused this evening. Susan?
Here.
And alternates Zach Terrell? Nope. And Michael Bouchard?
Here.
And Peter Julia?
Who is it?
And, wait a second, we have one, two, three, four, five, and we can see one alternate this evening. Well, Michael, you got here first, and I think you've been under-
Think we have seven?
No, because one of them is the Select Board alternate. I don't think you can replace the Select Board alternate.
Correct.
That's why we have a Select Board alternate, but-
Yeah.
Gotcha.
So, Michael, I will see you as a voting member, although we're not really voting on a whole lot this evening. And Peter, of course, you're willing to join in the conversation.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the minutes are approved. And we left Joseph.
He went to grab some of his paper.
Okay, got it. All right, so we're here to talk about zoning amendments for this year, but are there any public comments not related to the business on the agenda? I do want to make a, I'm not a member of the public here, but I do want to make a statement just saying thank you, as we were saying a few minutes ago to Rebecca, for her nine and change years on the board as Chair and Board Member, and her tremendous service and leadership on this board, and a great guide through lots of moments and cases and so forth on this board. So, thank you very much, much appreciated.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
I've served at least probably five years with Rebecca now between when she first came on and now to see the last two or three years. And she only got some of the best comments I've ever heard about a Chair of the Planning Board. And this was from the applicants. Everyone thought she was extremely fair, and she just did an amazing job, and the town is very lucky to have had her serve the board, and hopefully this is the last that we see of her on a board, so.
Thanks, Mike.
Well said, Mike.
Does that mean I can go now?
Service is voluntary. Every night.
You have an alternate. All right, communications received by the board. Joseph?
Yeah, communications received. So, the one, a couple of communications, I suppose, very relevant to the board. There have been a couple of appointments, or a couple of appointment requests to the board, so, one of which, a letter requesting appointment was received from Matt Yeton to the board as a Planning Board member, and the Select Board did approve that request. And there's also been a request from Bradford Puffer, which will be considered on Monday at the Select Board meeting. So, two requests, one has been heard already, and one will be heard on Monday.
So, one is a full member, the other one would be an alternate? So, Matt would be a full member?
Mm-hmm.
Does anybody have any reports from committees? All right, are we good to just move on to the business at hand, which is the zoning amendments? All right, so, many of you are here because we are this evening going over the zoning amendments that are up next week for a vote, and we're here to answer questions and talk about what these all mean for the town, and so we're going to be spending some time going through them one by one. And some of you are also here because I asked you as students, and I encourage you all to participate. All right, so, we have seven zoning amendments on the docket this evening, and, well, not on the docket this evening, but to talk about this evening, and to describe and discuss, just as a reminder that we will not be voting on any of these this evening, they, we're not, we're having a public hearing on these this evening. It really does an informational session to help clarify language, answer questions, and make sure that you all understand what we're looking at next week. And just, if you want further information as well, there is a series of videos online at Penny Baker TV, and also available through the Town of Plymouth website, that also explain these amendments, and myself and Matt were involved in making those videos. If you want to see the movie stars on Penny Baker TV. And, yeah, so, we're going to go through these. Most of these have to do, I guess, they all have to do in some way or another with housing, and the availability of housing, and cost of housing, and ways in which Plymouth can start to make some steps to address those issues, and hopefully continue to consider these issues and beyond, to make further steps into the future as we continue to look into these issues. We also have Judy Barrett and Alexis with us this evening, a Barrett Planning Group, who has been incredibly helpful through this process, assessing our needs in town, and what we might do to address some of those needs. So, all that being said, so we do have seven amendments, and I'm going to read each of the amendments, or not the entire amendment, I should say, the amendments as they appear on the ballot, or will be appearing on the ballot next week, and you can already see those ballots on the town website, sample ballots already now. And so I'm going to be reading those questions that are on the ballot, and I can spend a good amount of time describing each one and what it does, although I can also just kind of leave that for everyone to decide whether they want to ask questions before I start going into a long spiel about each one of them. So, I'll leave that all up to you. So, Amendment Number One is definitions. Are you in favor of zoning Amendment Number One, as proposed by the Plymouth Planning Board, to amend the Plymouth zoning ordinance as follows? Amend Article Two definitions to create a new definition for dwelling attached single family, amend the definition of attached multiple units to dwelling multifamily, describing a building to be occupied by between three and six units, and create a new definition for the term open space residential development. Are there any questions, or either about what this means specifically, or about even like what our intent is here? If you do have questions, just come up to the microphone, and you can address the board. All this, yeah, please.
James Miller, Plymouth resident, and I guess the question of intent on all of these would be important.
Okay.
I mean, I don't want to come up each time, but it would help me to know what was the purpose of this, and what are you trying to achieve by each of the amendments?
Fair enough. I'll say a few words about each one.
Right.
I just didn't know where everyone was in terms of understanding these before I started to go into something that maybe not everyone wanted to hear, but absolutely.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. So, we did a lot of public outreach, and one of the things that outreach told us is that there was a certain appetite in town for a kind of townhouse-style development, and we could talk about where, but like, there was an interest in that sort of development. And rather than try to treat that as multifamily or something else, we decided together that it would be a better way to move forward, to really treat that more specifically, as not a traditional, as we currently have to find a single-family home or a multifamily, but as single-family attached. So, they share a wall, and it'd be more of these townhouse-style buildings. And by creating a new definition for that particular type of building, we can regulate that separately from those other two that I just previously mentioned. So, we decided to create that definition for single-family attached, kind of townhouse-style development. And once we did that, single-family had to be kind of distinguished now as single-family detached, which is what we typically think of as a single-family home, freestanding and separated from other homes. So, that's where those come from. And in addition to that, just to kind of follow standard practices, so it would be more recognizable to people reading our zoning ordinance, we are proposing to change dwelling multiple unit to dwelling multifamily, which is just kind of more straightforward for some people to understand, and kind of follows broader conventions, and amended the definition and clarified open space residential development. This is something that appears a few times, and it has appeared a few times in our zoning ordinance, and there was a lack of consistency, and you'll see this come up a couple of times, about what we actually named this, and how we define this. And so we decided to, you know, let's do a little bit of housekeeping there as well, and just kind of clarify place to place that we're using the same term and same definition of this term. So, some of this is just kind of like housekeeping to keep things standardized and all that. The biggest, more substantive change is to create that definition for single-family attached.
John?
Yeah?
Do you want to say a few words? I mean, since there was a question about motivation on behalf of the public, maybe it's good to talk about the general need for housing and kind of the housing opportunity that we did.
Yeah, yeah. So, step back a little bit.
Do that better than I will.
Step back a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I'll give you a really quick version of the kind of broader context that the Town of Plymouth received a fairly sizable grant to work with consultants to do this study, and try to better understand our needs, and then address our needs. And, so, obviously, a real issue for Plymouth and a lot of other communities is the affordability of housing. A lot of single-family detached houses are just priced out for many people, and looking for what we sometimes call a missing middle, or other types of housing that can meet people's needs in different ways, that might be somewhat more affordable. And so, this starts to meet some of those needs. And it was a desirable type of housing for many people, for other reasons as well, if people wanted to downsize out of like having to take care of a yard and all that as well sometimes. There are lots of reasons that people may have wanted this, but in the broader scope of this series of issues that we've been looking at, it's also about providing some new choices and opportunities for housing that might be more affordable than what we often think about as a single-family detached house. Yeah. Are there any follow-ups? All right, thank you. So, we can move on to number two then. So, number two is the use table, and this is where, so we have all these definitions of different types of housing, among other things, and so we have to define then where those various uses and like housing types, for example, will be allowed within the town, and if there are any special permits necessary for that, and that's what we define in our use table. And so I'm just going to read Amendment Number Two then. Use table. Are you in favor of zoning Amendment Number Two, as proposed by the Planning Board, to amend the Plymouth zoning ordinance as follows? Amend Article Three, Section 304 to change the table of uses by updating names of certain uses for clarity. Change multifamily dwellings not exceeding six units from a special exception to a permitted use within the multifamily residential zoning district. Allow single-family attached dwellings up to four units as a permitted use in the multifamily residential, agricultural, civic institutional, and village commercial, and by special exception in the highway commercial and industrial commercial districts. Thank you. All those letters have become a jumble at some point. And, which is why we're doing all of this, because it gets confusing at some point for us. And amend the provisions referencing parking for more than, less than, or equal to 125% of the minimum parking requirement to eliminate the internal conflict. Accessory dwelling units will be by special exception in the SFR zone, a single-family residential, and permitted in all other zones. Remove cluster residential development and replace with open space residential development, which I was referring to a moment ago, and add a footnote to the table of uses to refer to the Plymouth subdivision regulations for regulations that apply in open space residential developments. That's a lot to take in. And this is in part why we're having this meeting. So, let me just kind of go through this piece by piece, I guess. Well, part of this is, so, by, once we change, add new definitions, or change names and definitions, very simply, that has to be reflected in the table of uses that they match. So, part of it is just like matching those. But also, if you add a new definition, like, single-family attached, you also then have to define like where that's allowed and where it's not allowed. And that's where I was listing the various places in town, multifamily residential, agricultural, civic institutional, village, commercial, where it would be allowed, and then the two other districts where it would be allowed by special exception, which is to say by going to the zoning board, meeting certain criteria, and then getting permission to create those. And, yeah. Another change here is that currently multifamily residential dwellings are not allowed by right, in other words, without getting a special permit, in the multifamily district. And we thought that that was a kind of no-brainer to change, and we understand there are certain reasons historically why that was the case, but it seems now that certainly it's the time to change that. If we have a district called multifamily residential, you should be able to make multifamily residential units. There was a reference to parking, and it was a hurdle to build parking, or create parking that was in excess of 125%, under 125%. And, in other words, something happened at some point that was not very sensical, and needed to be addressed. And so, we removed that here, and there is another parking amendment as well, which we'll get to in a few minutes. But, yeah, so that really didn't make any sense. And sometimes, changes happen, and then something is left dangling from other changes, and then you have to go in and clean it up, and so we've been doing a bit of that as well. One of the other things that's changed, and we'll talk about this more as well later, is, so cluster residential development is replaced by open space residential development, kind of aligning that terminology again across the whole document. And also adding a footnote that you will not find this any longer in the zoning ordinance, but instead in the subdivision regulations, which we'll talk about also again in a few minutes, why that's the case. And, I think that about does it. I tried to clarify this language. If it's still not clear, like, please let me know. Hopefully, it's a little bit clearer than how it's written here. I mean, this is the technical language that has to be written in, but-
John, can I say one thing about parking?
Yes.
Just because you'd mentioned there are two issues with parking. This one deals more with quantity, how much parking is required, the other one is more about the character of parking and where it can be. Right? So, you know, they're kind of different.
There's a little bit of overlap there, but yeah.
Right, generally.
So, Amendment Number Three is about dimensional requirements. So, this has to do with how large minimum lot sizes are in various parts of town, in various districts, and setbacks, so how far a building has to be set back, and in most cases, we're talking about residential structures here, has to be set back from the street, from property lines in front, and, whatever would be the front, from sides and back, as well as some parking setbacks and other issues like that. How large your frontage has to be, in other words, how long of a property line do you have along a street? And that's, yeah, pretty much what this all deals with. And so I'll read this, which explains some of the details, and then we can get into what some of that means in a moment. So, Amendment Three, dimensional requirements. Are you in favor of zoning Amendment Number Three, as proposed by the Plymouth Planning Board, to amend the Plymouth zoning ordinance as follows? Amend Article Three, Section 304 to change the dimensional standard table to reduce the minimum road frontage for a lot in single-family residential and multifamily residential, which is SFR and MFR as it'll appear on here, where off-site sewer is present from 100 to 75 feet, and reduce minimum setbacks in those zones, which would also allow the option of using front setbacks based on the average of the surrounding residential lots within 300 feet, but not less than five feet or 10 feet respectively. Add a separate setback table for uncovered parking spaces, and reduce the minimum parking setbacks in some districts, and allow parking as close as five feet by special exception. Change minimum lot sizes to a constant unit of measure, and replace lot area per multi-unit building table with a consistent requirement for additional square footage per unit over one differentiated by district. Where off-site water and sewer is available, reduce minimum lot size in single-family residential to 10,000 square feet, and in multifamily residential to 7,500 square feet. Remove dimensional reference to cluster residential development, and add footnote to refer to Plymouth subdivision regulations, and simplify lot size requirements by replacing one acre with 40,000 square feet, and half an acre with 20,000 square feet, in all cases aside from lots served by onsite well and septic systems. Again, it's a mouthful. So, just before getting into some of the details of this, I'm doing a lot of talking here, if anybody else wants to jump in, it's all right. I can also just keep going. One thing to keep in mind in general about all these changes is that, in general, in just about every case, these changes make our zoning less restrictive. It makes it easier for someone to develop residential properties in Plymouth. That has to be balanced. So, we want to make it less restrictive to ease some of the barriers to creating new housing, and at the same time, if you just, you know, strip too much away, then you risk potentially changing the character in detrimental ways of certain parts of Plymouth. And so it's kind of balanced between those things. And in some cases as well, I should say, which perhaps a good place to begin, like our single-family residential zone, the changes that we're talking about here wouldn't even change the character at all to be implemented. In fact, it instead does the opposite. It actually much more closely matches what's on the ground than what we currently have for zoning. So, if you look at some of our single-family zone, a lot of the single-family residential close to downtown, the lot sizes are often around 10,000 square feet, sometimes smaller, sometimes a little bit bigger, and under current zoning, you could not do that. And so a lot of our properties are out of conformity with our zoning. So, it's just best practice to kind of bring some of them in, so what we have in our paper actually matches what's on the ground. Now, there are times when you say, you know, maybe changing is for the better, so we can change the character to be better. And I think as a consensus, we all came to a consensus, including in terms of community outreach, that we really like these neighborhoods. And that would be something good to re-establish as a pattern of development in certain areas of town. And so, some of these changes, especially to the residential neighborhood, single-family, multifamily, really just kind of bring us back to a pattern of development that a lot of people in town really like. And so that's smaller lot sizes, 10,000 square feet in single-family residential as a minimum, and 7,500 in multifamily, shorter frontages to go along with that. Setbacks, if you walk around these neighborhoods, you'll often find buildings that are 10 feet or less from the street, and saying, you know, it seems to work there. And in fact, if you, would you want to build a house next to those houses with a much bigger setback? Would be out of place. So, saying, you know, you can have shorter setbacks, and if you want to go through the process, wait a second. And, yeah, and if it's even shorter than we're talking about here, even like five or 10 feet, you can go there if the properties around your property have a similar setback. So, that's some of what we did in the multifamily and single-family residential neighborhoods in terms of dimensions. Beyond that, one of the things that was confusing in our old zoning ordinance was that certain things were in acres, certain things were in square feet, and so you had to kind of convert back and forth if you're trying to compare like, you know, apples and oranges here. And so, we tried to put everything into one unit of measure, so put everything into square feet. Round most of our acres to 40,000 square feet, 20,000 square feet in some places, and it mentions a few that are exceptions to this, in lots without water and sewer, where you have onsite septic, onsite well, and just because of other state regulations that don't allow you to go to 40,000 anyway probably, that we'd keep those at a full acre. And, trying to think what I'm, oh, then it's the parking. So, also, if you go through some of these same neighborhoods we've been talking about, you'll see a lot of driveways that are like right on the property line. And, I mean, I live in one of these houses, you live in one of these houses, and there are a lot of those. And, again, this is part of a neighborhood that we really like, and a lot of people like value. And to put it right on the property line is probably a bit much today, but to allow people to go down to like five feet by special exception, seems like it could have some real value. And, so there's still a process in place, but it makes sense sometimes. And in another amendment, the parking amendment, we talked about buffers and stuff like that, but that wouldn't be in the dimensional section. Am I missing anything?
Mr. Chair, there is a comment in the chat asking for a specific example for this amendment. I'm not sure, I think since this was written, you've explained more, so I'm not sure if Mr. Blaine still wants clarification, but I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. A specific example, I mean, I've been mentioning some of the certain neighborhoods.
Do we want to invite the first to come off mute?
If they'd like to clarify, off mute or with another comment on chat, either way, I'd be happy to, or any of us could entertain that. Maybe while we're waiting, do you have a question or comment?
Hi, Viking Hedberg, Emerson Street. Thank you for the explanations, I realize we're a quiet crowd.
Awesome.
But it's very, very helpful. Just one quick question. With a setback from the street, is that the street, or, on Emerson, we have a sidewalk?
Yes.
Is that from the town right-of-way, or is that from the curb of the street?
I believe it's from the street, and Joseph, you can correct me if I'm wrong there.
It would be from the front property line, so typically, that would be the edge of the right-of-way, so.
The edge of the right-of-way, okay.
Yeah, so, probably, correct, probably 25 feet off center line, but it probably differs, you know, every street's got a different width, but-
Excellent, thank you. Any follow-up online?
Our Zoom friend says, no thanks, you covered it, so.
Okay, fair enough. Any other comments or questions? All right. All right.
Do you want anyone else to?
You want to read the amendment or introduce it?
Do we need to read the amendment? Do you think that, I mean?
I think it's helpful, and it'll take a couple minutes.
Helpful to read the language of the amendment on the, yeah, I can read for number four if that gives you a break.
Sure, and this, we've already been mentioning that we're coming up to the parking amendment, so here it is.
Very exciting. Amendment number four, off-street parking. Are you in favor of zoning amendment number four as proposed by the planning board to amend the Plymouth zoning ordinance as follows? Amend Article six, section 411 to change the parking requirement table to eliminate unused uses. Amend the multifamily dwelling and accessory dwelling unit parking requirements. Adjust the setback requirements between parking facilities and property lines. Update qualitative requirements, including require a buffer provision for most new parking in the side yard. Delete ambiguous wording in section 411.4C and clarify throughout and amend section 411.4D to apply to non-residential uses only.
If you want to have some fun, you can describe that one, too. Or I can do one.
I was not prepared to do that, but I can, give me two seconds, and I will, or I'll get ready for the next one.
No, I'll hop in. I have my text here I'm referring to from when we made the videos. Which I'm tempted to just read, but I won't. So parking, obviously parking is an issue that Plymouth likes to talk about, and it should be noted that we're like not doing anything big enough to make things dramatically worse or better, but we are making things a little bit better, and.
What do you mean, we're not addressing parking, tightness of parking in the downtown area?
Yeah, we're not like.
This isn't going to increase the parking supply downtown.
Yeah. However, there is some language in the parking section of our zoning ordinance which is simply unclear and needed to be updated. So there's a good amount of that going on here, which is not really worth getting into too much, and doesn't really, some of that does not represent substantive change, a lot, some of those small tweaks to the language here. However, there are some more substantive things. So ADUs, accessory dwelling units, what we sometimes call like in-law apartments, you know, those sorts of spaces. We would change that from necessitating two parking spaces in addition to the two already needed for a single-family home to one parking space in addition to the two that you need for the single-family home, which seems like it would be more reasonable in many cases not to have.
This is the minimum number of parking.
It's the minimum, you can still make four if you want total for a single-family home and an accessory dwelling unit, but you would no longer need to make four, it would be three instead total. There is some further clarification here of the parking setback issue that we were just talking about, getting beyond the numbers to talk about some of the character. So if you're going to be making side parking closer to the lot line, there's consideration here for buffers. So if you're, you know, getting a whole lot closer to your neighbor, to have language in there to mandate some kind of buffer, like vegetative or what have you, to alleviate any concerns there. What else do we have? Oh, this is the multi-family unit parking, which would be reduced to, was it one spot per unit?
One spot per every one-bedroom unit.
Yes.
And two parking spaces for every unit with two or more bedrooms.
And yes, exactly, and there's a table of it in the further amendment here, which I was going to be referring to, but thank you. Yes?
Just one quick clarification. With the ADU, is there any limits in the size of bedrooms to parking? Or could you have a 10-bedroom ADU and one parking spot?
You cannot have a 10-bedroom ADU, there are limits to the size of an ADU.
Okay.
Is it 1,000 square feet?
1,000 square feet.
1,000 square feet, okay, thank you.
I don't know, does it limit, I can't remember if it limits the number of bedrooms.
I think it limits the number of dwellers.
Two bedrooms.
And two bedrooms, yeah.
And two, yes, both are correct.
There's a question in the chat, if a garage counts as a parking spot.
Is that not just enclosed parking?
Yeah, I would see no reason why a garage wouldn't be considered, it's off-street parking.
Yeah, so do you want to address this?
Sure, yeah, I would see no reason why, you know, there's nothing currently or in this changed, to my understanding, that would impact that one way or the other, but, you know, off-street parking requirements deal with parking provided on the site, on the property of the use that it serves. So a parking space serving a use in a garage or out of a garage would seem to meet that requirement.
Thank you. All right.
Joseph, can I put this in? Someone asked if I could put this in the chat.
Oh, sure. Amendment number five is multiple buildings on a lot. Anyone want to trade off and read that?
I can get to it. Amendment five, all right. Are you in favor of zoning amendment number five as proposed by the Plymouth, by the planning board to amend the Plymouth zoning ordinance as follows? To change Article three, section 304.2 and Article four, section 401.1 to consolidate the commercial co-location section and multiple buildings on a single lot section into a new section 401.1, which would allow more than one principal structure on a lot subject to site plan review where applicable, and provide relevant life safety, fire, and other requirements are met. Multiple, single-family or two-family dwellings on a lot would be allowed by a conditional use permit. More than one main structure would also be removed from section 304 Table of Uses, and section 304.2 of Article three will be deleted once this amendment to Article four, section 401.1 is inserted.
Right, so basically here, we currently allow for commercial co-location, so multiple commercial buildings on a lot, and this would expand that to, and consolidate it with residential buildings on a lot. So you have multiple primary residential structures on a lot. And so provides extra flexibility for people who want to develop their land, and you still have to meet various setbacks, and again, fire safety and all that, as is mentioned here. But you can build multiple residential units on a lot more easily following this. And I think that pretty much sums it up.
On the downside, it can make subdivision challenging down the road. If you have a lot that's not really able to be subdivided and you put multiple buildings on it, and someone chooses to subdivide down the road, it can be a challenge.
So this is one of those cases though where.
Certainly muddies the environment.
You have to know what you're getting into if you're making one of these. And that if you do these, there are definite use cases for this where it would be really valuable to have, and, but you have to realize if you're going to do one of these, that it might cause issues for you down the road if you want to sell it. And you just have to kind of know that going in. And when I say sell it, sell it with the intent that somebody buying it might want to subdivide or something, and that might provide some barriers there, but if you know what you're getting into, it also provides certain flexibility that might be valuable to some people.
So I think, so in build form, it might look like an OSRD to someone driving by, but you know, a big difference would be that under multiple buildings on a lot, the entire lot is under common ownership.
Yes.
As opposed to an OSRD where it's, you know, individually owned. So just understanding exactly what you're getting into.
Get to make decisions about your property.
The term subdivision has come up several times.
Yes.
I'm not clear how that differs from the zoning ordinances, the town versus subdivision. And if you could just speak to that a little bit, that would help me.
So we have our zoning ordinance, which, you know, describes land use in our town and is legally binding, and can only be changed in Plymouth by a vote of the town, and that's going to happen next Tuesday. Our subdivision regulations and site plan regulations are, can be amended by the planning board with a public hearing. And so our site plan regulations, if someone comes in with a larger commercial development or a change of use, they go through site plan review. If someone wants to subdivide a piece of land and make smaller parcels, and even separate ownership of buildings on a single parcel, they'd have to go through subdivision. And so we have those separate subdivision regulations to deal with that process. And am I getting this basically?
Yeah, I mean.
So it's fine.
Go ahead.
The zoning ordinance defines how big the lots can be, or how, really how small they can be. What, you know, the frontage, all those dimensional requirements are defined in the zoning ordinance. The subdivision regulations are going to be what determines how we develop a larger subdivision, that the road needs to be brought up to town specs, what kind of information the planning board needs in any application submission, so. Is that what you're going to say, Phil?
Similar.
And it could also cover minor subdivisions as well, and.
Right, but still, yeah, the subdivision regulations almost guide the process to getting to be subdivided, where the zoning ordinance really defines what the dimensions can be.
Yes.
And how you can use the land.
Right.
Whereas the subdivision and site plan regulations are really around land development, and how you execute a project on a site.
The process, yeah.
Though in the subdivision process, we're really not going to be talking much about how you're going to develop the land, just making sure that whatever chunk you're making fits the requirements of the zoning ordinance.
At that time.
Thank you. All right. Other questions? All right. So amendment number six is OSRD, or open space residential development. Anyone want to pick this one up, or is it?
I'm happy to describe it, if someone else wants to read it. Or I can do both, doesn't matter.
I'll read it if you want me to.
Sure.
Are you in favor of zoning amendment number six as proposed by the planning board to amend the Plymouth zoning ordinance as follows? Amend Article three, section 304 and Article five to remove the current open space residential district requirements and replace with a reference to a new set of open space residential district standards that will be housed in the Plymouth subdivision regulations. In section 304, remove the reference to cluster residential development. Add footnotes to the tables of uses and area dimensions to refer to the Plymouth subdivision regulations, and create a new definition for open space residential district accordingly in Article two.
I thought we were on amendment seven, and that's what I was looking at.
Oops. So just a little bit of background here, so what is open space residential development? This is when you have a larger piece of land usually, and you want to divide it up for residential development, and you can create the housing there more densely packed together, clustered together, basically. And in return for doing that, you agree to set aside in perpetuity open space. And so that's basically what we're talking about here. So if you had a piece of land, right, and you could put like houses all over it and spaced apart as per our zoning ordinance, this says, well, you can actually bring them a little bit closer together, and you'd have less build-out for your infrastructure, for roads and water and all that kind of stuff. And in return for doing that, and having tighter dimensions than you'd otherwise be allowed to have, you set aside land over here, let's say, permanently as open space. So this is basically what we're talking about here. And currently, those are, this is described in detail in our zoning ordinance, and after hearing lots of advice, it, that's probably not worth going into all the kind of legalese of, it's recommended at this point that we put that in our subdivision regulations instead. And so what this basically does is it pulls this out of our zoning ordinance and says, you'll find it instead in the subdivision regulations. And so as a separate process from this, and in fact, we'll be talking about this a little bit later this evening, we're looking at our open space residential development regulations, and in the process of moving them from one place to another, if this amendment passes, we hope to also update them and kind of make some changes that are beneficial in various ways. So really, all this amendment does is not really change what we do with it, it simply takes it out of the zoning ordinance with the assumption that it will go into the subdivision regulations.
Which takes a public hearing and a vote by the planning board, not a vote from the town.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Does it currently read open space residential district?
It does.
Okay.
And it probably should not.
It didn't hit me until just now when I was reading it.
And Matt noticed that as well. And yeah, it does say that, and it's one of those things you just sometimes miss in like skimming through something. And yeah, it should say development, because it's not a zoning district.
Okay.
So, yes, you are correct.
Can we change it, or we can't change it?
Not at this point, no. I think legally, and Joseph has talked to the attorney, I believe, right? It should all be fine despite that kind of little mix-up in the wording. And the actual language of the change is correct.
That's correct.
And this is, so if they vote for this, they'll get this, which is all correct.
I didn't notice it until I just read it out loud.
Yeah. That happened to a few of us.
Okay.
I could just make one comment.
Yeah.
Open space residential development will still be recognized in the zoning ordinance because you need to provide for it in order to then allow it.
Mm-hmm.
But it's the execution of it that all moves over to subdivision regulations.
Yes, thank you. Which is what we were even talking about, like with the footnote and all that.
Yeah, exactly.
That instead of saying, go look at this section of the zoning ordinance, now we're saying, go look at the subdivision regulations. All right, any further questions? All right. Article seven is about accessory dwelling units. Anyone want to take this one up?
I'll do it.
Okay.
Are you in favor of amending, or zoning amendment number seven as proposed by the planning board to amend the Plymouth zoning ordinance as follows? Amend Article four, section 401.6 to change the accessory dwelling unit requirement by removing reference to a requirement for a conditional use permit and removing the statement about where they are permitted to eliminate redundancy with the other provisions for the permitted uses in Article three. And so it also will remove inaccurate language referencing state statutes. Simplify the purpose statement section and change the required parking spaces to a minimum of one for an accessory dwelling unit in addition to the spaces required for a single-family home. So we put the ADU ordinance in the zoning ordinance, I think in like 2017, because it was a state requirement that we had to. We chose as a board to put, require a conditional use permit so that any applicant who wanted to put an accessory dwelling unit on their property would need to come before the planning board. In part, the reason for that was just to see how the ordinance, how it was being used. And in the recent, gosh, six months, we've just seen a lot of, a lot of people coming with ADU permits, and it seemed to be a burden for the board, a burden for the applicant, and even a burden, maybe not as much for staff, but it just, it seemed to be we were putting people through more than they needed to do to require a public hearing for something. So we chose to move that to, and someone's going to probably correct me on this, but so that it was a permitted use in all zones except for the single-family residential, where a special exception would be required. These are generally things that don't go to site plan review, so usually, so the planning board won't see it at all except for in the single-family residential.
And can I clarify one thing here?
Sure.
So we also noticed that our table of uses had that information you just described, that we were considering amending. And then we said it again in this ADU section, so it was kind of doubled up, which leaves the possibility of making an amendment to one section and not the other section in the future, and creating more headaches again. section and not the other section in the future, and creating more headaches again.
Which is what we've been trying to clean up with all these other amendments.
Exactly. So, we decided to simply strip that from this section, and just leave it in the table of uses. So, but, which I didn't describe when I was talking about the table of uses, so, thank you.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
So anyway, so remove the requirement for a conditional use permit. We've already talked about this a little bit, so remove, reduce the parking requirement for an accessory dwelling unit from two parking spaces to one parking space. And then, there's some language that's just really inaccurate about workforce housing, and so the, we'd like, the plan is to just strike that from the ordinance.
That's about it, yeah. Any questions?
Katie Hedberg, Emerson Street. This is actually just a general information question. We live in the, a single-family residence district, and my question is about, in the multifamily, as it's called, is there going to be, or are there currently regulations for how many unrelated people can live in each dwelling? That's happened in the single-family residence zone, mostly due to the college, and I think a lot of them are within range and some are not, and I don't know how that would work for the multifamily zones, because we do need more housing that's affordable, but I am concerned of how it's going to be looked to make sure we're not losing the affordable housing to students and not the workforce people who I think we really need it.
So, there's a few pieces to that, and it gets complicated. So, that is obviously listed in our zoning ordinance right now, with what you're referencing, for single-family residential, and it would be hard to apply to multifamily, and in fact, it's hard to apply in some ways to single-family, because there's some question about, like, if that's even problematic even happen there in the first place, from a fair housing perspective. And it seems to be, from various people talking about it, including at the state level right now, a little bit of a gray area, let's say. So there's like that, just as a preface to the whole thing. And, I forgot the rest of it now.
Maybe something, you're probably going to say something about the changing residency requirements and enrollment at the college, and there's a lot less pressure on, on our downtown neighborhoods because of how, of some policy changes at the college level.
Exactly what I'm talking about, yes. So in fact, some of that multifamily has been starting to slowly trickle into some families and such, as opposed to students in recent years. And at least in the foreseeable future, it looks like things are going more that way rather than less.
Thank you.
If I may, there's a question in the chat.
Okay.
What is the number of unrelated people currently allowed?
Three.
Correct.
And there is a state law considering this very question right now, Joseph, yes?
That's my understanding.
Yep.
So it gets complicated when we talk about that. All right, and that would be amendment number seven. So those are our zoning amendments that are going to be appearing next Tuesday on the ballot, and just to reiterate, that's Tuesday on the ballot, not on Wednesday at the town meeting, at the face-to-face town meeting. And we do hope to keep working on some of these issues, and maybe have some more changes coming up for a future year, and we're already, some of those conversations are already happening about what some of those things could be, and so I would encourage you all to kind of stay tuned to some of that as we move forward to other things we might be considering. And also, you know, public input never ends, and community input never ends, and...
In a good way.
Yeah, I mean it in a good way, yes. I mean that in a way to encourage you all to keep participating, and if you have ideas and thoughts, and suggestions, questions, please keep it coming, and that's what I mean by it never ends, yes. If there was any lack of clarity there. And if you want to stick around, we're going to be talking about our open space residential development regulations coming up next. I believe that's what's next, right? There's nothing else in between? No. Are there any broader questions before we kind of conclude our zoning?
It's not really a question, but just from looking at all of this, you folks must have put in a lot of work. And as a citizen, I just want to thank you for that. I'm sure this was not easy to do, and thank you for being willing and able to do it.
And I'll take that opportunity, actually, thank you very much, to thank the housing committee that has been working on this, as the subcommittee of the planning board, the planning board that has been working on this, Barrett Planning Group that has been working on this, community members that have come out to our meetings to talk to us, and to sit for interviews and other things. It has been a lot of work.
Yeah.
And I'm tremendously thankful to everyone who's been involved in this.
I think it's a...
I see a thumbs up on the screen there.
A reflection of the town's character, I think, that people are willing to work together and try to do what's best, so, thank you.
Mike, did you have a comment first?
Yeah, I just want to say it was, the housing committee was a cross-section of the town, it was, I thought, represented a lot of different views. There were a lot of things on the table, and we kind of boiled it down to what we thought was palatable and fit the community, and I think we got it right. There's maybe some things that I wanted, maybe things that other people wanted, but we got what was best for the town, we thought.
Along the same vein as what Mike is saying, you know, we do our best to try and gauge public sentiment when it comes to appropriateness of changes to the zoning ordinance, and all we can do is kind of draft what we think makes sense that would work with our ordinance, and put that forward to the town, but it's really up to the voters of the town to decide if, you know, if that's what is the best for everyone. So, you know, I really, I kind of enjoy the legislative process at town, of town politics, it's always interesting to see how it goes. So, you know, we are doing our best to represent the interest of the town, but it's really the vote of the town that matters, so please, go, next Tuesday, go vote.
What he said.
One more thing. When we first started the process, the housing committee looked at four different consultants to help us through the process, and we got very lucky, very fortunate to have Judy and Alexis to help us through the process, and the town was extremely well-served by Barrett Planning, and I can't say enough good things about them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you all for showing up. And like I said, if you want to stick around...
There's more fun.
It continues. And if not, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. So, John?
Yes. Oh, are you going to be?
Full disclosure.
What's that?
Full disclosure.
Yep.
You'll stay until about eight.
Okay.
Then, I'm leaving.
Okay.
Because yesterday, I drove to Keene, New Hampshire for a site visit, and then took Rotten Mass last night for a night meeting, and I'm about done, so...
I got it.
I was still eight.
Thank you for staying as long as you can.
Oh, no, it's fine.
We appreciate you being here for this.
No, I'm glad you'd be here, and I...
We love coming.
Yeah, we really love being here. I just was wiped out when I got home last night.
As you should be.
Understood, yeah.
Can I tell you one thing, though?
Yeah.
As much as you may think you're different from Keene, I was blown away when I went there. I went there for a site visit for a project we're working on for a state agency, and when we met with the assessor, first thing he said was, you know, "The taxes are really high here." And, and I, so he showed us the zoning map, and he said, "All that land outside the core of town, that's all conditional, it's all..."
Current use.
Thank you, current use, thank you. Yeah, current use. And it was like a whole town outside of the town center. I thought, this is like, this is like Plymouth. And I said so...
Seventy-five percent of our acreage.
Yeah, exactly. Well, it was the same story. So even though their downtown's bigger, and they have, I think, a bigger college, I think it is bigger, but, but when you get outside the core of Plymouth, it's like, I mean, outside the core of Keene, it's the same story. The nonprofit lands, the non-taxable land, the current use, it was wild. So I thought, I just have to tell you this, it's like this is your community.
I'd be curious to know what the city of Keene has for a payment and lieu of taxes agreement with Keene State College.
I brought that up, and he didn't know.
I would like to know how Plymouth and Keene compare.
Yeah, I said there had been an issue here.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't really know, but...
Thank you.
The town administrator used to sit right at this table, you knew that.
Really?
Yeah, Elizabeth Dragon.
It was just very interesting, so, just want you to know that on scale, it may be different, but a lot of the issues were the same.
Thank you.
Thought we were so unique.
Elizabeth, we said hi.
Okay, let me talk about, I have, all right, sorry, I'm getting myself back in a different headspace here for a second. So, our OSRD regulations. So I hope you all had a chance to look at these, and I made some comments, which I just realized I don't have printed out anywhere, I'll just check my phone. So, I'm reading my phone, that's why. And I know, last time we did this, I front-loaded my comments, and I am open to not doing that this time, and seeing what you all have to say, hopefully having read through these. While you think about that, I'm going to pull up my comments.
So I guess, kind of an overall comment, is our planner that was here for a couple years, who left, made a comment that we need to keep it simple for the town. This is very involved, and maybe there's some ways to simplify it for the town in a couple of different ways, and I think we should be open to simplifying as much as we can. It's my overall comment. A little bit more specific is, we have something that is called the cluster development. Right now, we've had it for, I don't know, twenty-some-odd years, and we've only had one or two people take advantage of it. And there are some incentives to do it by saving on the cost of building roads, saving on sidewalks, and so there are some advantages, cost savings, to do that. I'm just, I get a little concerned when the percent of extra lots for, there's just a lot of it in here, which complicates it a little bit, so I guess as we go word line by line, or section by section, I might have more specific comments.
Actually, can I just follow up on that quick? The one section that, I think in many ways, I find this clearer to read than our current one, the only place is that I find difficult, and I kind of really paused for a moment on, and more than a long moment, was the table here, which, it took me some time to get through that.
Which page are you on?
Page five. As far as the bonuses, we have bonuses in our current regulations, and so, that's not something we don't have right now. I think some of the numbers need to be looked at here, in terms of the bonuses, but we do currently have bonuses.
Yeah, yeah, we, actually, I just almost cloned, I think.
All right.
This is what you have now.
All right.
Yeah, so it's on, of the old ones, this is page thirty-seven of our zoning ordinance, there are a list of different bonuses, which are in some ways more complex than what's written here right now.
I mean, I think part of the purpose is, you know, there's a lot of stuff in here, but to make it more clear on what we're looking for, so it's not a complicated thing, you know, so that, it is complicated, it's a complicated thing to do, there's a lot of moving parts. If someone wants to go for this, we need to work for that, with them through this, so, so it is what we want to see, as far as an open space residential.
Anyone who's doing an OSRD is not just playing a house on their lot, it's a developer, and they can, it should be as clear as possible for them, so they know what they're getting into, but also detailed enough that they know what they're getting into, at the same time, yeah?
I just wanted to, I agree with Mike to a point that, you know, it's nice to have simplicity available, and we have simplicity available in the standard subdivision regulations. You know, open space, the OSRD gives up simplicity for density, you know, there has, there has to be some controls to make sure that the additional density is not just density, it's density with open space. So I think the simplicity is there. If somebody wants to do a subdivision with five-acre lots, they can do it, easy peasy.
But nobody's going to be carving off...
That's really simple, but that's not an open space.
Carving off an OSRD for, you know, their kids to use. You know, like what you, yeah.
And just to further clarify, that open space also has to be a valuable open space.
Yeah.
And that's also where, that's also where some of this comes into play. And really kind of specifying that, we don't just want some random open space and say, "You did it, yay," but it should really be something valuable to the community.
Here's a gravel pit.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, no, I mean, and value can be dependent on where it is, you know, if it's, if this is an OSRD that's off Old Hebron Road, and it's very rural, I mean, the value in that open space might be wildlife habitat. If it's, you know, if it's off Texas Hill, you know, right off, it's out of Fox Pond Park, that open space might be better suited for recreation, you know, but we have the ability to evaluate that based on where the application comes, and, you know, I think value in what that open space provides is, should be somewhat subjective.
Except it does have to be open to the residents of the development.
Yeah, and, you know, sometimes they make, sometimes they'll make it open to, open to the public, too.
And that's one of the bonuses here, if you actually make it available not just to the development, but beyond that, you get a, you get a density bonus.
Which is, which is similar to how open space works, too, like, or, sorry, current use, you know, there's a standard deduction for current use that allows for certain uses, if you make your land open to the public for recreation, you get a higher deduction.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there's a...
There's an organization called SPACE that advocates for that. I think they're, they might even be based out of Keene, but, yeah, they have good information on that.
There's a comment in the chat that it would be great if it would be open to the public, which, I believe there is a provision in the density bonuses for public access as a potential for...
In fact, there's a bit of overlap there, there's one about open to the public, and there's another one about like pathways going through, which would implicitly also make it open to the public.
So, you know, I've often heard from property owners, though, that are doing a cross, open space residential development, some concerns about liability, like, "I'm opening my property now for anybody to kind of walk through here, but I still own it, it's not public land."
You know...
That's true, but New Hampshire has very rigorous, pretty, pretty aggressive protections for land, for private land that's open to the public. I mean, and it goes back to the snowmobile clubs.
Yeah.
And the work they've done to ensure that people can access private property for recreation.
Yeah.
Actually, if you, if you go up to Green Woodlands, where there's privately-held land that's open to recreation, they have a big disclaimer on their signs that basically says like, "Hey, New Hampshire has really strong landowner protection laws for public recreation, so don't even try to sue us."
Basically, you know, it's not, doesn't say that literally, but that's, that's the meaning
of the disclaimer.
That's interesting.
And it's not even just recreation, it goes beyond that, but certainly in this case, that's what's most relevant, yeah?
Yeah, so I, you know, I think, I think landowners do have, you know, there's valid concern in someone suing you, but I think New Hampshire has more protections than many states in terms of public access to private land.
Well, the fact is, if somebody doesn't want to provide it, they don't have to take advantage of that density bonus, so...
That's true, that's absolutely true. They can make it for residents of that community only, without the density bonus, but, you know.
Should we start getting into specifics, or did anybody notice anything specifically that was of concern, or anything else like that? I'm going to start going through my checklist again.
I mean, it's helpful to go through it kind of in a linear...
Yeah.
...way, and if there's anything, any specific feedback that is needed from us, that's helpful to know. It's hard for me to even remember what we had said.
Yeah, I agree.
I think one of the...
Two months ago, when we left...
I was going to say, it's helpful for us to point out some of the changes.
One of the things we did talk about, and there seemed to be broad consensus about, at the bottom of the first page, was permitted uses in the OSRD, and currently it's single-family detached and attached dwellings, and we had talked about, and I think we all generally agreed upon, all underlying residential uses, or all residential uses in the underlying zone.
So you're looking at the clean version, right? You don't have the red line?
I guess... I guess so, yeah.
Yeah.
There was a
Is there a note about that?
Yeah, but you're just correct that we took that out in that section.
Okay, that's changed, or?
Yes.
Okay, never mind then.
Wait, on
I have a red line. And I thought I had sent both, and I apologize if I did not.
So, so for the, under general requirements, permitted uses in an OSRD shall be as follows. I think in the current version, whether it's redlined or not, does it still say, single-family attached, detached or attached dwellings and accessory uses?
That's what we have.
Yeah, that's, and so I think what you're saying is you had wanted it to be any allowed residential use in the
Well, this is what we, we talked about this last time, that we were allowing all residential uses in the underlying zone.
So, any, it's not an underlying zone. It's a zoning district, so
We're in the zoning district, yeah.
Any residential use allowed in the district shall be allowed in an OSRD. Is that what you want to say?
Exactly, yes.
Do we want to
Unless we don't want to.
I love asterisks. What happens if the parcel crosses boundaries?
That's actually addressed somewhere else down the line in here. I don't remember what page it's on.
Well, I mean, if we're talking about uses, should we say that, you know, whatever zone represents the majority of land in the proposed subdivision shall be
That's in here somewhere.
To apply to the whole subdivision?
I don't remember where that is in here. I did read that somewhere.
Okay.
Yeah.
Somebody was thinking. If I did read it, I don't remember. Anyway.
Are there any
So, even though we say it's a minimum of, if somebody came in with a nine-point-five acre OSRD and a single-family, we would have step four for
Well, if they came in with a nine-point-five acre in a single-family residential, the good news would be this is our subdivision regulations, and if we chose, we could waive that and say, you're close enough. If it seemed like it would be fitting to do so. We wouldn't want to do that willy-nilly, obviously, but like, we could. Waive that potentially.
Well, part of what you're trying to do with the minimum acreage is establish a type of project that you're seeking. So, there is a provision in here that if someone doesn't meet the minimum acreage requirement, there's some additional steps they
Number four, right after that.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I was reading, basically.
Yeah, I mean, so there's no minimum for the ag district, but then the other districts, there is a minimum, and there's a lot of there's a lot to talk about, even in that concept, because in, in communities that have a lot of open land, the large minimum tract size makes sense. But in communities that are more substantially developed, sometimes it's just the little piece of open space that people pass every day that you would like to save. And so, by allowing just flexible development design, you may be able to save the open space viewed from the road and set homes back. And so, in cases like that, sometimes you don't want to have a minimum that's too high, because you want to allow flexible development that preserves the ambiance of open space even in a smaller scale. So, there's policy. That's why I said months, weeks ago, this is all policy. Now, I'm making up stuff here, thinking what I think you want, but
Is anybody willing to speak to why, like, in number three, we have a ten-acre minimum for a single-family residential, but a five-acre minimum in multifamily residential?
It's just, it's, I was looking for feedback.
Okay, so it seems counterintuitive to me. I mean, it seems like it would be okay, especially now, if, if our proposed change, zoning changes go through, and we allow ten thousand square foot lots in the single-family residential, you could get a fairly effective open space OSRD on a five-acre lot. You know, I think if we're, if we're looking at, you know, I would think
You can shrink this down to whatever you want. You can say five.
This was just, so, but I was, I was curious, was, was there a motivation for keeping that bigger than the, than the multifamily and village commercial?
No, I was just figuring in the multifamily district, you really have small, just very small parcels anyway. But I, this, I am not married, I'm not married to any of these numbers. I was looking for feedback. If you want to say five acres and both, it's fine with me.
I'm wondering if we should, if we should just go down to five.
I'm not opposed to that.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Actually, just, just get rid of the middle one and put SFR down to the others.
Yeah.
Sure, that's totally fine.
So, that's a proposal, just
Okay.
I can think of a couple of lots in town that are probably that size, that like, it'd be kind of nice to do a little cluster there.
That is totally fine. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So, there is a comment in the chat that I don't know when it would be relevant, so is it okay if I just read it?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Are there any planned requirements about adjacent lots with developments consolidating open space, or making open spaces be connected and therefore continuous?
There is a provision that we'll get to soon, actually, in next page, I think, about density bonuses, and about connecting open spaces and trails and other things like that, that is probably exactly what we're talking about here.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on this page? This is the projects not meeting the minimum acreage requirements. Go through a couple of extra hoops, just to say like, yeah, it's legit to do it there.
I mean, you provide a, the hoop is the impact statement.
Yeah. More specifically, yes. In, in section five, the only thing I would change there is if we're in fact are going to be doing density bonuses, the resulting number of units shall not allow a higher density than that provided by a conventional subdivision on the same parcel of land, except as allowed by Article Six, or whatever, something like that. That's the reference where you actually can go above one hundred.
What's that page?
Which one is that?
This is on page three, number five. Three, three lines down to number five, the resulting number of units shall not exceed a higher density than that provided by a conventional subdivision, except
Is allowed under section six below?
Yeah.
Can we put another sentence in number five? Somewhat defining the yield plan, or is that defined somewhere else?
So, it's not really defined here, and we can, I mean, the whole point of the yield plan is not to put somebody through the wringer?
True, but I think we should have
Like, you can use existing available data. For typically for a yield plan. That's, I mean, I'm just saying typically, that's the way it's done.
But I mean, I, I think the, the yield plan should just, I mean, it should just be something that is simple as the yield plan must be must, must represent a conventional subdivision that could be built on the land according to existing zoning.
I think that'll help more the board
Yeah.
than the developer, who might be used to seeing things like a yield plan, but it would be, I think, helpful for the board in reviewing these applications, to understand what that is.
So, the town I used to live in, we, we had some restrictions on land appropriate, that was appropriate for development. We wouldn't allow, you know, we had minimum acreages of land exclusive of steep slopes and wetlands. So, when you did a yield plan, you first had to take out steep slopes and wetlands, and then figure out, then each lot had to have a certain amount of land that was suitable for building. So, that made the yield plans a little bit more complicated, but not having any definition is also somewhat
You can, you can certainly
Hard, undefined.
Yeah, no, I mean, you can certainly do that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not suggesting we go that far here, but I think we do need to have a definition.
All I'm saying is I would keep it simple, because what you, you want people to use this.
Yeah.
So, if you start trying to require a yield plan that relies on too much site investigation or whatever, you're not gonna get it.
But it could just be simply like, there, there might be, you know, three million dollars worth of roads that they theoretically could build to get this many lots in, and like, so, you know, I, I think it should allow for without having to say, yeah, we're gonna build those roads, you know. I think the whole point of a, of an OSRD is to allow for subdivision without those, those development costs, but like, someone could say, if I really wanted to dump money into this and build all these roads, I could get three hundred parcels on this, or three hundred lots out of this parcel.
I guess one of my, one of my questions might be, what is typical of other towns? I guess it probably varies, but we don't want someone to say, well, I'm gonna go next door, because like, this is a pain in the butt.
So, the practice with this varies a lot. I mean, there are some communities that do this based on a formula, so there's no yield plan at all. Let's say, you know, you, you determine developable land as follows. You take out whatever you're gonna define as steep slopes.
Yeah. Wetland.
Take out, yeah, mapped wetlands, but you're not requiring somebody to do, to do a delineation at that point. You're just saying mapped wetlands. You're making an assumption about roads and, you know, whatever, fifteen percent or something of the site. You just take it out, and here's what's left, and divide that by the minimum lot area for the district, and that's your minimum.
Right, and, and that's, right.
And so
That's simpler than
Again, it's like, how, how much do you want to put somebody through
Right.
to do this? And it's a policy thing, so I'm looking for direction.
No, and, and I think the more, the more well we define that, the easier it is for an applicant, and I think that what you just suggested is, is something we should basically consider, is, you know, make it easy enough with a rough number of what this
Formula?
Yeah.
I love the formula approach, because
I do, too, actually.
Really, it's just, everybody knows the rules.
Right. This, this is the theoretical maximum development on this parcel, so that defines the base number of lots you could create, and then you start adding density bonuses on top of that.
Can I, can I point out that in number four on the previous page, now granted, this is specific to projects not meeting the minimum acreage requirement, but under A, it does, it does, it does, you know, one yield plan showing a subdivision plan based on conventional regulations, then a second as OSRD. I mean, is that, can that simple definition be applied as well to
Well, see, that's a different thing, though. This is saying, if you don't meet the minimum
Right.
acreage, we're not getting necessarily the degree of public benefit of the open space, therefore, you gotta show us that this actually makes sense.
So, this isn't, that section you refer to isn't really defining the
I actually wonder if that, if that requirement should be pulled out of four A and just apply to all OSRDs, because I mean, why, why would we require it just for ones that don't meet the minimum acreage?
This is talking about the preliminary hearing.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's, it's really, you're trying to get a certain effect.
Okay, got it, thank you.
So, if someone wants to take advantage of this, because they're doing a major subdivision, but they don't meet the minimum land area, you know, it's sort of a, show us that this makes sense.
So, my, my only concern with adding too much to this is that we haven't, like, I think Mike was saying, we haven't really had a whole lot of these.
True.
And some of that might be the lack of clarity in our current language.
It's also permitting process.
On the other hand
We haven't seen any major subdivisions at all in at least nine and a half years.
I, I think as long as we're protecting ourselves in what we
It's a lot, that's why.
want to do to like maximize the character of the town and all that, I think other stuff that we can drop without harming ourselves might be beneficial, just because we get so little of this anyway. With, and I, I think not defining that doesn't necessarily hurt us, as long as we can, I mean, I, I, I agree with you, Phil, I think in principle, I just look at the fact that we get so little, like, of this anyway.
So, I think about the yield plan, knowing how little this gets used, and we get somebody who's coming in with a open space residential development, and they're like, here's the planning board, here's the yield plan. I'm like, what the heck's a yield plan, and how do I even, you know, how do I know that this is what we were actually even looking for?
There's nothing wrong with requiring yield plan. All I'm trying to say is if you're trying to encourage people to use this, I wouldn't, I wouldn't spend a lot of time on the yield plan, because what's more important is the open space residential development. The yield plan is simply to establish how many units they can get.
And the formula does it more effectively without a plan?
Well, it's easier.
Well, right.
So much easier, but
And for comparison purposes, what we require today, if you came in right now, it would be permitted density shall be determined by the planning board during pre-application review, and determining the permitted density for the OSRD, planning board shall establish base, density based on developable land, minimum lot size required for the applicable zone in which the development is proposed, and a conceptual layout for a conventional subdivision.
So, why would anybody spend a dime on a permitting process where you get to decide?
Right.
You know, it's up to the planning board?
If we want this to be, people to take advantage of it, make it easy, put the formula out there.
Planning board gets to determine your density? I mean
And, and we, we look all the time at what people give us, and, and we can say like, no, this is not enough, like, we need more information, and we do do that, like, site plans all the time.
Mike, you're looking bothered by something. What are you thinking?
No, I just think this, this is a great board, and I can just picture in ten, fifteen years, and the board may be more lay-oriented, and it just puts a lot on the planner to go through all this. So, I mean, more people will take advantage of this? I don't know.
I think it puts less than it, than it does currently.
I think any major subdivision is really complex and needs a lot of, a lot of time and thought that goes into it, based staff, board, external, any external review we might need, you know, it's, there's major implications for the town on major subdivisions, so.
Currently, the planning board, as Joseph has read, is actually doing a lot of this work, and this would actually take some of that off the planning board.
I mean, we've had a, some open space with the workforce housing on, you, you must have been on that, weren't you? And they have some open space that went around the property, they had the, the playground in the middle that was open space, and so we've seen a number of these, but no density advantages. We saw the one that, the two brothers that came in recently to reevaluate, and they had the perimeter with a, yeah, with a nice little walkway that I thought not much of at the beginning, till you saw what their overall plan was that met at the little waterfront that they had, and we've seen it before. It's I mean, is that different than what we're, we're saying? They, they may not have truncated the roads, but they did offer some open space, and
I mean, it's an open space design, is what this is about.
Can they still do those types of developments with open space? That's
That's what this is about.
They don't have to take advantage of the shorter roads and the truncated lots. They can just do that, correct?
Some people might want to, but you don't, you don't have to.
Right, but I'm just saying that, that's still available without having to go through this.
Yeah, I get, I mean
If they don't want the, if they don't want the density bonus, yeah.
No, they don't have to take advantage of the density bonus.
I'm, I'm actually kind of a little I wanna, I kind of want to wait, Mike, I'm still trying to process what's gonna happen if, if the table of uses is, the changes to minimum lot sizes happens, like, there's gonna be a lot of change already, and then starting to add density bonuses, like, we're, we're, I mean, if we're looking at, you know, ten thousand square foot minimum lot sizes in single-family with water and sewer, and we start adding density bonuses, we're gonna end up with, you know, six thousand square foot lots.
Realistically, I think the best application of this is in your ag district, but that's just
Sure, sure, but, but I mean, if these rules, if we approve these rules, and somebody comes to us with a development of, you know, twenty-six thousand square foot parcels, you know, we shouldn't be surprised.
Would that be a terrible thing?
No, no, I mean, it would be some density, and it might be affordable, but is, it's a lot different than what we're used to. My, my point is we're making multiple changes that might overlap and multiply with each other.
Yeah, I, I agree.
The whole point of the density bonuses is to get some kind of additional benefit. I mean, that's the point.
Can we actually talk about the density bonuses before you leave? I see it's eight o'clock now.
It is eight o'clock.
All right, we can get you back by, by Zooming another meeting, correct? The first Thursday of next month, and continue this?
We're not going anywhere. We're stuck to this.
Are we really pressed to get this right after town meeting?
I mean, it would be nice. It's not gonna happen at this point anyway, because we have to finalize this, you know, notice a public hearing, and so it's not gonna happen either way. The sooner the better. And I, I, we're not gonna finalize the language tonight, I know that.
Mostly what we're looking for is just, you tell us what you want to do, because, as I've said, this is all policy, is what it is.
For me, the one thing that I want personally, want guidance on, and don't want to just tell you what to do, is the density bonus options, which I think you know already, like, don't kind of line up.
They don't. It's so funny.
And so, let's, like, I was just kind of like, saying like fifty percent total, and then twenty, twenty, twenty down the line, which would be sixty, of course, but for a maximum of fifty, and I don't know if that makes sense, or if you would recommend something different?
I mean, because the density bonuses that are here are largely what's in your current zoning, I'm reluctant, I don't want to do anything to these without direction from the board.
Okay.
But whatever they end up being, they should add up. So, if it's gonna be fifty, then it should be fifty, but right now, your zoning says
Wait, if it's, if the total is fifty, you could still have numbers down below that add up to Wait, if it's, if the total is fifty, you could still have numbers down below that add up to more than that, as long as you don't use them in a way that equals more than fifty.
So you're just suggesting changing the maximum density bonus to fifty percent rather than a hundred?
I'm just throwing that out there, and then go twenty, twenty, twenty down below. But maybe that's wrong, I don't know. I haven't looked at a whole lot of these.
Yeah.
The other thing you could consider.
I was just starting to think about that.
Not to single out anything, but I mean, you could limit the density bonuses to development in the ag district. I don't know. I mean, to your point about, once you start shrinking the lot size anyway.
Yeah.
In some ways, someone may not need, may not be as interested in this, but when you've got a larger lot requirement, then the opportunity to do something like this is more appealing.
Yeah.
So you could consider that.
I, I could see a model where we use, like, so let's say we left a hundred, hundred percent density bonus and then somebody did, you know, a single-family residential development with water and sewer. So they're down to ten thousand square foot minimum lot size with the density bonus. They could be down to a five thousand square foot minimum lot size. However, like, that almost eliminates parking. So like, that means like you have to have a parking area and sidewalks, but then now you have a walkable community. There, there are developments, there was a development in Peterborough recently that was, that was like that, and it was very pop, it's very popular. It's, it's a very, it's a really nice feeling when you're there. So, I mean, it's different than what we have now. It, it's going to open the doors to big changes, but I don't think, you know.
Not that everybody's going to rush in tomorrow and make those changes.
Without a commitment and, and some legwork on their own. You know, nobody's just going to go willy-nilly like, oh, I'm going to do a twenty-five thousand square foot.
Here we go now, we're going to do an OSRD, isn't this fun?
And what we do have today is, for open space developments, the planning board shall award density bonuses based on the four criteria below, which is wrong. We actually have five criteria. But they add up, it says, to a maximum density bonus of one hundred. So theoretically, if you took all five, calls it four, or if you took all the bonuses we have in here, and you sort of added them up, it allows up to a maximum of forty, a hundred and forty percent.
Right.
And then it caps it out at the top at one hundred percent, but the maximum.
But you can get there any number of ways.
Right.
You can get to a hundred percent with any combination of those hundred forty percent options.
And I think one of the big reasons that one hundred percent doesn't work anymore is because we took out the provision for the in perpetuity, which provided a density bonus of fifty percent all by itself. And that's not in there anymore because the new OSRD are saying it should be required.
And we might not want a hundred percent anyway.
Right.
Right.
Especially with smaller lot sizes.
Can I make, sorry, I'm interrupting.
Yeah.
Alexis, are you sticking around, or are you both leaving?
She's my ride.
Okay, okay.
But what we asked Joseph to do earlier is to just, we're going to talk tomorrow about any of these continued changes. So I would say, if there's anything else you want us to weigh in on.
Yeah.
I'm just a minor thing that I can tell Joseph about, but this is like my last, this is my last crack at it.
I want to stop peppering you with.
Oh, yeah.
No, 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 it's okay, it's, it's just a very fine detail about which land trust to reference in here. Strike in Hampshire, Audubon, put in Lakes Region Conservation Trust.
Okay, there we go, all right, you got that, Joseph?
Yeah.
Thank you, you know, so much for having us. We'll talk tomorrow about any other changes to this. And then, you know, we'll be always happy to zoom in as well if it continues this discussion.
And this will also be on YouTube, so we can refer back.
Yeah.
Thank you both for coming.
Nope, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This was, this was a good meeting.
Enjoy some rest.
Yeah, it was healthy, pardon me?
Enjoy some rest, or a little, little bit of it anyway.
It's just such a long day.
Especially, especially if you're tired from last night, driving tonight might be hard, so be careful.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no, we're staying over, which is the other, we, we have to get to the restaurant. That is so delicious.
Got it.
All right.
Need to just crash tonight, folks. But you know where to find us, we're not going anywhere.
Where to find you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Good night, much appreciated.
Good seeing you.
Yeah, you too. Rebecca, you've been really great working with us on this whole.
Thank you for all your help.
This whole process, you've been really great, and, you know, all of the public meetings I threw last minute, tasks at you, you were rock stars, thank you.
You don't feel a little bad about leaving?
I mean, as of now, there's somebody already has taken my place on the board, so I don't have the option of coming back.
Ten years is a long time.
I.
I, I did that before I was here, it's, it's a big.
Like I said, I've never had a job for.
Planning board death match.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See who wins the, the spot.
I've already been replaced, so I don't even have to feel bad.
Am I still on mic here?
I think so.
Somebody could petition next year to have, to move the planning board and zoning board positions to elected instead of appointed.
So anyway, we, we are still talking, we are still talking about the OSRD here.
If we're on section, yeah, I'm kind of moving ahead.
Where are you?
Page nine.
Can we, can we, we've been going through it nice and systematically here, can we wait to get to page nine?
I just jumped ahead because I just wanted to ensure where those notes needed to be made.
Before we leave number five, which I know we've already left, but how do we feel about the?
Where are we?
Yield plan?
Where are we?
But Phil was asking for a little extra clarification. How do we feel about that as a planning board?
I honestly, my, my thinking is that I, I really like having a published formula that allows developers to say, this is simple. This is what they're expecting for a yield plan, and we don't have to create a plan. We don't have to map out theoretical roads and show where we would have enough frontage or enough acreage for each of these lots and the roads we're constructing. That, that's a lot of work. Like, if, if what we're trying to get is, is density, then we should have a, we should work on coming up with a formula.
And presumably, if someone's doing a larger subdivision, and they're not as familiar with that sort of thing, a larger, anybody doing this will probably be working with an engineer who can look at that and go, here you go.
Right.
I was just going to say, these are not going to be done by a developer. They're going to hand this off to an engineer who's going to immediately come and get all this information, and they're going to know exactly what we're talking about.
I'm not opposed to a formula.
But, but the.
But I think.
All for clarity.
Plan is actually, it relies us to review it and approve it before we agree to that number of lots. Where, like, you get that question out of the way. This is the formula, if you comply with it, then you, you can already start developing your plan that you're going to come on for the OSRD.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
It would be interesting if we had Peter here to still weigh in on this, since he is an engineer.
Yeah.
It's too bad.
Why do you think we left?
What about you, Sue? Any thoughts on that?
About this?
With the yield plan?
I, I just, no, I don't have any thoughts about it. I've, the stuff that's been put out there, I would have the same comments, but I just feel like Rebecca said, it's got to be something that the board, when it just comes to the board, it's got to be something that the board can maneuver through easily. Because you can get hung up really, really bad, and everybody does.
As, as a caveat to that, we get stuff that some of us look at in like, some, some of the engineering reports and stuff, where, like, we rely on staff and others to interpret those for us or help us through those. And if you're one of those people that love to look at the yield plan?
Somebody else will.
Yeah.
Mike Fignalli, is that?
And I, so I, I, I think it's okay if we can all understand it. And we, we, we face that all the time already as a board.
I'm trying to think back to other, like, think about the, the property we looked at along the river. I remember the gentleman who was proposing a mixed residential and camping area.
Oh, yeah. How could we forget?
Hard road.
I don't remember that at all.
But think about that parcel, like, we had, there was, there was both floodplain and, what's the sensitive, what's the?
Environmentally sensitive zone.
Environmentally sensitive area, like, so when we think about this formula, it needs to exclude floodplain or environmentally sensitive areas so that you're not, you know, basing, you know, on that, you know, thirty acre parcel or whatever it was, fifteen acres of it was, was not developable. So like, he should be building, that, that formula should be.
I'm, I'm convinced that if we put a formula in, the engineer will look at it and will have an easier time than trying to guess what we want.
So let's, let's put that on the to-do list.
Okay.
The formula.
Yeah.
Are you okay with that?
Great.
You're going to have to come back next, next month, next week.
I'm away that, I'm away that day.
All right.
I know the environmentally sensitive zone is such a complicated, it all depends on how you want to interpret it, so.
I don't know.
And let's not get into that.
Let's not talk about that. In honor of my last board meeting, I'd like to not talk about the environmentally sensitive zone.
Oh, actually.
That's okay.
I'm just going to interrupt for one second.
Oh, no.
When we do, as a reminder to Joseph, and deferring to you, when we do have our public hearing for the subdivision regulations, make sure Rebecca's change.
It's not my change, it's the change our lawyer said we need to do.
The change that you keep suggesting, though, that the lawyer suggested to you, is in there.
Yeah, and I think we just need to ask Attorney Rattigan what it is that we need to do after that court case.
Yeah. Yeah, so how about the density bonus about numbers here? I, I don't mind the, to me, to me at least, the wording looks pretty good, but public access bonus, um, yeah, anyway, so the agricultural use and, like, historically significant and wildlife and all that.
My instinct is that each individual bonus is probably too big, and that we should make each, like, rather than having some be twenty percent, we should go for, like, instead of being ten and twenty, we should be looking at five and ten and capping it at fifty.
Well, I was thinking of capping it at fifty, but allowing them to add as written to over fifty, this way we can kind of pick and choose how we want to use those.
Not everyone has a cellar hole or a cemetery that they could.
So even if you don't have a cellar hole or something, you can still get to fifty by other means.
I, I'm okay with that, as long, you know, I'm okay with providing, as long as, you know, they're qualified and valuable. And maybe what we should do is, is create a list of all of the, the criteria that we're offering for density bonuses, and as a board, like, kind of rank them in terms of value internally, and then we can kind of put our heads together and say, all right, yeah, protecting land for agricultural use, that's, that's a high, maybe that's a higher value than the ag zone than it is in the MF, in the multifamily residential.
I don't want to start divvying this up by zone notes and start getting complicated with more tables and stuff.
Well, it's not going to happen in the MFR anyway, but like, if, if, if it is, you know, if you get a fifty acre subdivision that somebody does with, that's along a river and there's ag, there's ag, like, and.
You have a farm, and you have a farm, yeah.
Yeah. Anyway. My brain goes too fast here, sorry.
There's someone growing tomatoes there.
So are, do we need more time to think about that one?
Sounds like we like fifty percent.
And we all go with fifty?
I like fifty percent.
Okay.
Only because we're already giving them a density bonus. You know, if, if there's a one acre minimum lot size, you might be going down to half acres already, and then you're going down to a third, or, you know.
And they still have to make it happen somehow. And that's a creatively, if they want to go, go that extra bit, they still have to creatively find a way to do that.
I really like the co-located non-residential uses, seven B.
I will note on, sorry, go ahead.
No, that's fine, I, I honestly think, I think we should be allowing those in, allowing density bonuses and conventional subdivisions for those.
I will just, a, a quick comment on those, and this is something I noted in the previous draft, too. Those don't quite align with the definite, or the terms that, the way these terms are used in our zoning ordinance. So for example, personal service establishment, we don't have that in our zoning. We call that a commercial service, and just a couple of other things like that.
If we can realign.
Yeah, adult daycare facility, we don't have that. We have a residential institution, so I don't think, I, I just think that the names were probably placeholders from somewhere else, but should probably use the same terms we use in our zoning ordinance because theoretically, if it's not defined in our zoning ordinance, it's not permitted. So if there's something, you know, we can't say it's permitted under here, but not under zoning. And most of them are very close to things we allow. Like, I assume that, you know, bank is included here as a personal service establishment in our zoning. That's a separate use.
Little daycare facility, is that their place in the Massachusetts border?
They need to match, or we're just going to be making corrections again.
Right.
So we've got to make that match.
Oh, got it. Never mind. You were the kind of crazy case a couple of weeks ago. I'll press. So, let's see, where are those? So, if I can jump, are we okay to jump ahead to number five?
Sure.
So I was like racking my brains looking at this table, and it's not easy to read. And I had first looked at it and started like crossing things out and like writing different numbers in. And then I realized in my brain, actually, when I took the time to understand it, I think they do make sense, all these numbers, but it's difficult to understand. And I just wonder if there's a better way of representing this, either by breaking up the table in a slightly different way and/or adding like a diagram or something, which I think we talked about a little bit last time.
I think the math changes, if we're going to hold the density bonus to fifty percent, the math changes a little bit.
In what way?
And it, um, maybe not. Maybe we should still have a minimum lot size, respective of that.
Actually, my one question I did have about this is, there's a zero setback or distance between units in cluster developments, which I assume could accommodate, like, single-family attached. Because between units, not from, like, a setback from the property line, because there are no property lines.
There, there could be property lines, this could be a full-on subdivision.
No, this is specifically clusters as opposed to subdivision.
Okay.
And this is where this whole table starts to get a little bit hard to like.
Thank you.
Is this one that it might be best to discuss when we've got Judy here to interpret what's going on? Because I, I find I don't even know how to look at this, so, and maybe it's because it's.
I, I think either way, it needs to be easier for someone to read and understand. It's, it's hard to get your head around this table.
Yeah.
I took a good amount of time looking at it till I really kind of felt I knew what was going on.
So this does say, the, the, comment A, I think pertains to that, though it doesn't really say, but I think that's likely what it means. So it's saying, no side setbacks shall be required in an OSRD for units in attached, single-family dwellings, whether condominium ownership or zero lot line developments. So my read is that that's telling you, you can have a lot line down the common wall of an attached, single-family unit.
This, this is in clusters.
Oh, yeah, we're talking about, not the subdivision.
Yeah.
Sure, sure. I was looking at the, the right column.
And I was wondering, between units, let's say you did like a tiny home development. Presumably, you actually need some distance between those units.
Yeah.
However, if you're doing a single-family attached, you don't need a distance. And perhaps this is where, as long as you're following life safety and all that, which is somewhere else in here, maybe that number is expanded anyway by default. And I, I, I think this table needs some, I don't know if it needs tweaking or not, but I think it needs clarification just to make it easier to read with diagrams, or at least finding another way to kind of spread that out. Phil?
I, I was just trying to think back to building code issues. I think there are different code construction, different requirements for construction. You know, if you have a shared wall between the budding units, there's a, a different fire rating on that shared wall. I think the same applies if there's less than a minimum building separation. And especially, I, I think in states that mandate sprinklers, those can be reduced, but I think in New Hampshire, because we don't require sprinklers. Yeah, anyway, it, it gets complicated. Those, yeah, those are questions for the developer, but I don't think, I don't think anything we're doing so far is.
We do require sprinklers, a thousand feet of this.
Do also just note here, so it says, under frontage requirements, point C on this table, frontage requirements for subdivision lots shall not apply to cluster subdivisions, et cetera. Nevertheless, paved access suitable for emergency vehicles shall be provided. Accessways shall be privately owned and comply with the driveway standards in Article Three, Section J, B, and Section Q. There really, I, I think that might be a misplaced reference because that does not refer you to a driveway set of standards. So I think we need to make sure that we know what standards that's referring to because as of right now, section, Article Three is definitions, and, but there is no Section J or Section Q in that, in that portion.
I was actually having trouble finding the definition of cluster, but it is, it's in five B on page three.
May also be worth noting in that question, section C, that it says, frontage requirements shall not apply to cluster subdivisions. I don't know if there should be a note that the underlying parcel that you're placing this on needs to have frontage still. It's not saying that like a landlocked lot is not what that's referring to. I don't know if that even needs to be clarified, but I could see that potentially causing confusion.
Is there a difference between cluster and planned unit development?
Yes.
In this, cluster is defined on.
Reduced sizes of lots.
No. Cluster is more specific, it's defined, where was it? I just saw it.
I think it has to do with ownership of buildings rather than subdividing the actual land.
Yeah, so here, Mike, 5B on page three, that's the allocation. That's where, in this, that's where cluster is defined.
We don't have a planned unit development.
Is that in zoning?
No, we don't have a, you're right, we don't have a planned unit development standard today. That would be, you know, you could put together a planned unit development plan and have a.
It's allowed by state law. We could do, we could do one in theory.
towns can allow them as a use, it's similar to this and, but it can be.
Do you have to allow that as a use to actually take advantage of one? Or is it still be allowed by default in state law?
Not that I'm aware of, I believe it's just like this, you can have them, it's out of, you know, they, kind of in, with the village alternative plan development where you can have a, the planning board can approve sort of a PUD, Planned Use Development Plan that could allow whole mix of uses and similarly, the planning board can waive or vary some requirements for kind of a particular use in a particular part of town. It could be, it could be an office complex thing, it could be a residential or mixed use. There's a lot of, a lot of different things that it could, could be, but I guess that's kind of a long answer that we don't, we don't have one currently in our zoning.
I think that's something that maybe Tenny Mountain may, may want to look at it at some point too.
I thought about that in the past as well.
The advantage is, the only land that building, or the landowner would own is the land that's underneath their home.
So we'll be talking about Tenny Mountain soon, but like, not tonight. I do want to see if there's anything else. Did you have something you wanted to look forward to in here, Mike?
Yeah. Is that page nine?
It's page nine.
For E, the required common open space should be owned and maintained by the developer until it is owned by one or more of the following ways. So my thought is if a development gets sold out and there's, say, 10 lots and the developer might want to set into the, the covenants that the owners all own the open land, and we're not giving that option.
That's three, that's E3.
By private?
By private, non-private corporation, association, or other non-private legal entity such as an owners group.
There you go, thank you very much.
HOA.
Such as a homeowner's association.
Yeah, I think it's important to have that option because a land trust is not going to want a tiny open space. There's just not going to be.
So in addition to the open space, if it's a private road, there should be covenants that deal with the maintenance of the road until such time that it's taken over by the town. And maybe, you know, there are lots of reasons that a developer should be placing covenants on a development like this.
I would say, and that doesn't necessarily have to mean here, because some of that's in our broader subdivision regulations.
Sure, sure.
Just if you got the note to change it from the New Hampshire Audubon to Lakes Region Conservation Trust, I think is a much more appropriate land trust to include.
Sure, yeah.
I mean, are these examples?
Lakes Region land trusts? Examples and, yeah.
Is that what you said?
Yeah, I wouldn't, yeah, it's a minor silly thing, but.
Audubon Sergeant was big over in your son, so.
So I still have a question that I brought up, the last time we talked about this. If, say, you got 10 acres and you've got two acres that are set aside and it's run by the Pemme Baker Land Trust or another organization. These homes that are built on it maybe have a life of 100 years, let's say, maybe 150. And as far as I know, we've been here for a number of years already, we hopefully will be here a lot more. And then we may have this two acre piece owned by this association or land trust and then a quarter of an acre over here and 10 acres over here and it's this mix-match pattern. And it may be hard for them to give it up at some point. I don't know how that whole process, legal part works, but I don't know, could throw a monkey wrench down the road on how to assemble things back to where you could do something without having to.
The whole point is you'll never do something on that property. That's the point of conserving it. And a land trust is not going to, it would be a, unless there was something absolutely magical on a half acre parcel or even like a two acre parcel, no land trust is going to want to take that as a conservation, isn't it? Because there's, there's the.
Say that last part again, there's.
No, no land trust is going to take that as a, as a conservation, as a conservation, it's just too small.
Okay, so what is like too small that they wouldn't want?
I think it really depends on, yeah.
Value, the connectivity.
I mean, are they going to want a two acre piece inside the center of town, like the town common?
Probably not.
No, I mean, I mean, I can't speak, I mean, I'm not sure.
Hard to overgeneralize?
Yeah, it's really hard to generalize and say what, because different land trusts are going to be doing different things, but in my experience.
Yeah, keep in mind, that's an option where like, if you've got, you know, a big development with valuable land that has significant features, like, that might be a good one. But like, if it's not, then you go with the covenants and the, so here's the other weird thing that can happen. Like, the ownership of the land should be, like, a percentage of the taxes should be assessed to each parcel. What I've seen before is that, like, or what I've heard of, I think, is like, if the land is held by the owners' association and the owners' association falls apart and they stop paying taxes, then the town takes that parcel for taxes and now they can sell it. So, so the deeding of that land should be in common.
Can they lean that, put a lien against the other parcels for that?
So that's the whole thing, is it, it has to be defined in such a way that there's common ownership of that open space by individuals and they're automatically assessed for its value on their taxes.
I mean, presumably, if it's a homeowners' association, there would be a connection there, no?
Presumably, but, but my point is that if it's a, let's say you have 10 houses and an 11th lot for the open space. If the 10 people decide, we're not going to pay the taxes on the 11th lot.
Any put a lien against those 10 houses?
But technically, they don't own it, because it's the association that owns it.
Oh, man.
It's, the association is the legal entity and then the town might take it for taxes and say, then the town votes to say, we're going to sell it or turn it into a playground or do something like.
Yeah, but, I mean, they can't just have, they can't just say, here's this 11th lot and I promise, we promise we're not going to develop it. There's going to be things, covenants on that property, yeah, that will keep.
Typically, the developer's going to develop it and then when the development's done, it becomes an association. So you don't get into that situation. Unfortunately, that's not the case up at Tenny. We have five associations that don't talk to each other.
That's not good.
And, you know, who's responsible for the roads, everybody's pointing fingers.
Yeah, I think we're looking at like outside cases here, which is good to think about to some extent.
Yeah.
But not to get overly hung up on.
I agree.
Edge cases.
Despite my sidetrack, I agree with you.
And I know you are, I know that that's currently how it works taxation-wise in Plymouth, at least from everything that I've heard from assessing is that it's, it's just like you said, any, whether it's a condo, association, or a HOA-owned parcel, it's evenly, taxes are evenly divided amongst the.
Shared amongst the association, so it's not a separate tax bill.
That's my understanding of it anyway, it's evenly divided amongst the properties that benefit from the HOA.
Either evenly or proportionally, one way or another.
Yeah.
And presumably, any deal that we looked at would go through the town's attorney to make sure everything was done correctly.
So, Mike, getting back to your question, are you concerned about what happens down the road in 100 years when maybe somebody doesn't want that open space anymore or wants to do something different with it?
Yeah, let's say that there's 10 acres and there's 10 lots and there's three acres that are set aside and at some point, that lot is going to change and maybe it becomes commercial because the town expands. And now you've got this area that another entity owns and it may be that it fits in a, in a different area on that 10 acres rather than where it is. And it, it just seems like it gets complicated, we've got this huge web.
Well, I would say that, I mean, is it benefit to being complicated to change? Because you do want to conserve that land and that's the whole point of this.
I have nothing wrong with conserving it.
There are times when those can be changed or even revoked, there are a lot of hurdles to go through. And sometimes you can even like, get everybody involved and like, say, like, we, we're going to set this aside instead now and we're actually going to revoke it over here, but it's still a big process to go through and rightly so, I think. But it is possible in those kind of more extreme cases, which are probably, again, I think kind of edge cases, but they do exist, yeah.
And then it's policing those covenants, it's policing all of that stuff, it's just who's going to.
There are outside.
Go after, so there's just, it can be very complicated and it's just the risk you take when you do these subdivisions.
And there are outside entities that can help with that, so it doesn't just fall upon the town.
Well, and if it's, but if it's a land trust that holds the easement, then it's not the town that, that does that.
And if it's covenants, that's actually a civil issue, that's like, that's, the town doesn't.
Yeah, and it's up to them to take it up with.
If a homeowner's violating their covenants, it's, the other homeowners can sue them, but the town is not going to get involved. Like, that's not a zoning issue unless, unless it's a violation of zoning or subdivision requirement or if there's a violation of a condition of approval or something like that, the town might get involved, but then they go after the developer, not the homeowners.
It sounds like we have a lot of agreement. The, that one table is still kind of racking our brains a bit. And again, I personally don't know if anything needs to be changed, but at the very least, in terms of the numbers, but at the very least, it needs to be, I think, changed in terms of like making it more legible to a kind of standard, homo sapiens.
So, the last number E, or letter E on page 10 actually deals with the assessment of taxes, but I'm wondering if we should add road maintenance in with cost of common open space maintenance.
Is that not covered in the rest of the subdivision?
I think there probably would be.
Okay.
Because this is just about the open space, right? No, this is the homeowners' association? Oh, it's a common open space, yeah. Yeah, this, like, this whole section is just about, it's all part of D, which is common open space.
Yeah.
I think, as Rebecca was saying, that would probably be the broader subdivision regulations. Which also probably need a good updating, but they've been around for a couple of months.
Just a little while.
There's a lot to this.
There is.
It's, it just, none of us have enough experience, maybe there's someone here that does.
Yeah.
We're just laypeople trying, making guesses on a lot of this stuff.
Well, and this is why we have our planning group and I think they've given us some good guidance. And they're listening to us and trying to use their expertise to turn our misgivings and desires into something that works.
Mike, I think you're right, there's a lot of responsibility on us to read and understand what we're proposing. But, you know, that's how New Hampshire does planning.
It's going to take time.
Every town has a small group of people like us that's considering their zoning ordinances and their site plan regulations and their subdivision regulations, sorry.
Just taking own personal experiences, going through subdivisions and stuff, you try to fit it all in and work it. It's just, it's just going to take time and reading through it, it's far from being done.
This is a good start, though.
It is, we have to start somewhere.
Yeah.
And, but you know, we don't even, it seems like just coming up with the questions of what, yeah. And I have a lot of faith in Barrett, but it'd be really neat to find an attorney or someone that deals with this stuff on a regular basis that can point.
That's Barrett. Nobody does this as much as they do.
Mike, I'd like to add a comment to that, because I sit here, I'm quiet all the time, but to your point, I deal with a lot of the opportunity funds and this is an opportunity zone too. It's unique because he's only 28 in the, in the state of New Hampshire. And one of my, one of my concerns is that at the state level, when you get into the housing grants and so on, there actually is a set of qualifiers and all of a sudden now, we have somebody who wants to come in here and spend 100 million, you know, on 400 acres and they're restricted because of what we put into place. Are we going to have some type of a waiver for if somebody comes in here with deep pockets and follow the state guidelines?
A waiver for what exactly?
For like what the specifications are for some of these grants, like if they require, you know, multi-dwelling units at 16 units instead of six or taller than 100 feet.
I was going to say, the waiver of specific regulations here, the planning board could do. Waiver of something like 16 units, that would be the zoning board and that would be obviously a.
Variance.
Variance.
So there's means to do that.
But the developer could go to, could go to the ZBA and say, hey, we have a federal grant that specifies that, you know, we're eligible for this amount of money and we'd like to put this into this type of project, but we're required to have no fewer than 16 units per building, we're proposing to do this. And if they get the variance, they do it, if they don't.
It's still, it's still a high bar to get the variance, even with that.
Yeah, it is, it is.
But there's no limit on a hotel, there's no limit on, I, well, maybe there's a limit, but we've got hotels that were just approved not too long ago for, I don't know, 40, 50, 60 units in them? Who knows, I don't remember them there. And, you know, there's something like, what's the place over in Samberton that, TimeShares? I don't know how many units they have, but I don't.
None of those things address housing issues, though.
Yeah, and I think that's what.
At least not in the long term.
And that's something that, not sure what we have for zoning for that now, but at least we allow multiple units for hotels anyway.
Good, good to know. Thank you.
Yep.
You know, Mike, to your point, I think, you know, the variance process is exactly for that. You know, if, if we put up something that's too onerous for a developer to do something and take advantage of a great funding opportunity like that, the ZBA should seriously be considering, you know, is this a unique opportunity that we're going to miss out on?
Well, a unique opportunity might not be enough of a bar for the ZBA on a variance.
But we don't have to, we don't have to decide that.
We do not.
That's what I was just going to say, and that's not our problem.
The fact that it's recreational and it's, do we have any type of recreational overlay here?
No.
What is Tenny Mountain, it's.
Agriculture.
Yep.
It's in the agriculture zone, but I thought there was some other type of designation for that area.
It's agriculture with a waiver on industrial equipment, which is recreational equipment, it's qualified as industrial.
Okay, I thought there was even more than that too. But I'm really excited about getting into Tenny Mountain in the future, hopefully within the next 12 months and looking at what we can do.
I think it would behoove us to encourage redevelopment of that parcel, I think it would benefit us, benefit the town greatly.
And we are going to be working with Barrett Planning on looking at the Tenny Mountain area before our contract is up, which is pretty soon, but we are going to start.
June, is it?
June, yeah.
Wow, that's three months.
So for those of us in the housing committee, I was, once we get through this week, I'm thinking it's time to meet again and start talking about our next steps, once we, this.
Is the housing committee, is the housing committee still?
It still exists, there's a couple of, obviously, people who haven't been as active. And at this point, if, come April, the housing committee is also going to have a planning board quorum.
Oh. I would recommend that you avoid that.
Is anybody willing to step down? We'll have to talk about that, perhaps we can talk about it at the next housing committee meeting.
Are there four planning board members on the housing committee?
There will be.
Then, I mean, that makes, honestly, I would recommend somebody step down just because like you have to publicly notice every meeting and take minutes, like.
Well, we publicly notice our meetings anyway, but we'll have to double notice them as also planning board meetings.
Yes.
So anyway, we'll talk about this.
And there has to be an agenda and.
No, it's on, it's on the radar.
Right.
And that's as of April.
April 1st is when the term begins.
All right, is there anything else, I don't think no more agendas anymore.
As much as I appreciate the work that everybody does and I'm not happy to recommend somebody step down from that committee, having four planning board members on it, it's a good one.
I don't mind.
I mean, they can, one of us could still just show up and not be a member of it.
No, you still, you still have a quorum on the planning board.
Yes.
Oh, right.
You can't discuss any planning board business.
Right, unless we notice it.
A planning board meeting.
And then you have to take minutes and approve the minutes and becomes a meeting of the planning board, just like these.
All right, so we have some good comments. So we have some good comments for Judy and Alexis, um, and we'll take another crack at this at another meeting.
Work in progress.
Um, is there any other business from any of us?
Before we adjourn, I would like to say thank you to Rebecca one more time.
Skating, embarrassing. Thank you.
And one, one more thing before we adjourn. Are there any public comments?
Yes. First, I'd like to thank the planning board for all their seriously hard work, and I also would like to address the part of all the work that we do is basically on Article 1 of the page, one of our ordinance, which talks about the intent and purpose of our ordinance. And first part deals with the codes and standards of safety for the public, and the other part is the maintaining our natural environment. And I think going, looking at the way they've put out these new ordinances, you've addressed the, uh, what the intent and purpose are, is, and I think that is very helpful for the citizens to understand and acknowledge. Um, and I think going forward on these programs, I'd like to suggest you think about the regulatory alignment for housing, because when we're trying to get compliance at the local level, we have federal, uh, state, county definitions of housing that may not be compatible with ours, and it makes it very difficult for somebody to comply if they do get a grant, federal grant from housing, federal housing, obviously, a bill into their standards. And, um, you know, this is where sometimes we make the assumption of knowledge that everybody is talking the same description of simple thing like a house, and not realizing that everybody's got a different view of it. So that's just a thought. And I would like to personally thank Rebecca Hanson for your professional service to the community, and we have been well-served, and, um, so, thank you very much.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you to your students for coming. I hope they enjoyed it.
They left before the OSRD discussion. I'll have to give them a hell after a break.
I do have another, other business, as the board, no, it's probably-
You're not a member of the public?
Well, I, I can be both, I guess, in this case, if we go back to other business, or we can wait till next time. Um, so Amy had been, Amy Lee had been helping with some planning and zoning stuff. Uh, of course, as, as many of you are aware, Aaron, the prior interim town clerk, had,